First item on our agenda is roll call.
Commissioner Height.
Present.
Commissioner Teta.
Here.
Commissioner Pauling.
Here.
Commissioner Shernick.
Here.
Commissioner Goldberg.
Here.
Commissioner O'Noran.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here. All right, next is Communications from Brian Schumacher, our Principal Planner. Commissioners, I have nothing additional outside of what you have in your desk already. Okay, thank you. Next is our Public Invited to be Heard. This is for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak to the commission, we would love to hear from him. You got five minutes. No, that's a construction meeting. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, so we do have two people signed up for items that are not on the agenda tonight, Ruby Bowman and Chris Boardman. Was that a mistake? Or are you speaking about the agenda items?
Well, I have some comments that I originally was going to say, and I want to say them. So I don't want to run out of time.
Is it about an item that is on tonight's agenda?
It's about the area we said, but I have additional comments that I want to say in the public hearings before my extended time.
Okay, this is only for items that are not on the agenda. So I'll wait to call you until we're into the actual public hearing. Okay, thank you. Mr. Boardman.
Same here.
Same thing, okay. Anybody else from the public who'd like to speak about something that's not on the agenda tonight? Seeing no one, we'll close the Public Invited to be Heard. Next is approval of our January 15, 2020 regular meeting minutes. Any discussion?
I move to approve the January 15, 2020 regular meeting minutes.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve January 15.
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Teta. The motion to approve was Commissioner Pauling. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
We abstain.
Commissioner Goldberg and Commissioner Height abstain. So the next is a public hearing item, number six on our agenda, which is Riverset Annexation, PZR 2020-2, with Principal Planner.
So diving into this project, just to give you some background, this is at the northeast corner of Boston Avenue and Sunset Street, right here. It's approximately six acres. It's currently in unincorporated Boulder County's general industrial. It's adjacent to, trying to get my mouse going here. It's adjacent to the St. Brain Creek here on the east side. In the envisioned Longmont Comprehensive Plan, this property has a land use designation as mixed-use employment, and they are requesting the same zoning, mixed-use employment. The properties to the south and the west, sorry if my mouse is funky here, over here are zone primary employment. These lots here are all in city of Longmont limits. The property east of the creek over here, also in city limits, that's sound mixed-use employment, that's the left-hand drilling company. And then the properties north and west up here are in unincorporated Boulder County. These two lots are not in the city. This is lost in construction. And so this is the applicant's concept plan. As you can see, there's no specific site development at this time. This is common with annexation applications where they'd like to bring the property in, but they aren't, they haven't nailed down a project yet, but they know that they're going to zone it consistent with its land use category in the comprehensive plan. That's the case here. So they're trying to annex, my mouse is not sure.
Ava, can you pause just a second?
Sure.
Thanks.
So once again, they're requesting to zone this property mixed-use employment. Some of the allowable uses that could be allowed on this property, if it's annexed, are manufacturing, office storage, flex space, some commercial and restaurants, live-work units as a secondary use, meaning there'd have to be some other primary use associated with it, it couldn't all be live-work. High-density residential, same thing, secondary use, and potentially a hotel as a secondary use. While the concept plan doesn't have a site-specific plan on it with a project, their traffic study indicated, or it's contemplating, for about 25,000 square feet of office flex space with 23 live-work units. So that's how they based the traffic study. Just some background on the site, a couple things. As you saw, the property owner will be required to dedicate land for channel widening for the Resilient St. Brain flood control project that's going on right next to it. We have Josh Sherman from Public Works Engineering. He's the project manager for that, and he's available to answer any questions about that channel widening project. But we, in your packet, there was a graphic from the Army Corps of Engineers that kind of shows on the east side of the property where we would need a land dedication. So we put in a draft annexation agreement. It's not available for public view yet. It's still in attorney's offices, but that is something that staff would require as part of the annexation, well, as the agreement. And so this would, this land dedication would occur upon development application. So when they plat the property, they would give us the land dedication at that point. Some environmental background, it was in your packets, but there was a Phase One and a Phase Two environmental site assessment on this property. The Phase One talked about some anecdotal reports about this possibly being a former gravel line and possibly formerly a landfill. The report went on to say that they could find no state permits or records of this being either of those. And furthermore, the Phase One report did soil sampling and said that they found no materials that would be consistent with landfill. We do know that the property to the south of this on Boston, the Colorado Materials Landscape Company, that was previously a landfill, but there were no records to indicate this on this parcel. I know that, well, we'll go forward in a minute, but I know there were some comments about an Army Corps study related to the Resilient St. Brain project that may have alluded to this being a landfill. But what I put on your dais tonight was confirmation from the Army Corps that that was erroneous information that's going to be taken out of the report, and it was not, there's nothing to substantiate that it was ever a landfill. There was, there's some storage areas on the back of the property, I guess up on the north side, and in the Phase One report, it said one of the storage areas stored pesticides and another leasing space, if you will, they did vehicle repair. So the Phase Two did some soil and water samples to check if there were any pesticide or petroleum contamination. There were none in the deep so, there were some shallow where maybe some things had spilled over during, you know, something falling over, but when they bored down, I think it was 16 feet or so, it's in the report, they found no evidence of any contamination. They just recommended that if construction de-watering is necessary for construction out here, that they do some groundwater treatment. The fire department has reviewed both reports. They don't recommend any additional mitigation measures. They said this groundwater treatment is already a city requirement and process through the construction process. So that would be something that we would require nevertheless. There was a traffic study prepared for the annexation. Again, they kind of based their study on a potential of 25,000 square feet of flex office, 23 live-work. It came out to approximately 497 weekday trips, and that would be at full build-out of everything. The current level of service at Boston and Sunset in the morning rush is currently at Level of Service C. The traffic study said this project wouldn't, it wouldn't change it, it wouldn't make it worse, and it wouldn't impact it regardless of whether there was development or not. It would still be a C with the development or without. But nevertheless, they said if they submit a development application, a couple of mitigation items they could do are left-turn lanes on eastbound Boston entering the site, which would effectively widen Boston to have that turn lane. They didn't think a right-turn deceleration lane was warranted for, if you were going westbound on Boston and coming into the site. These type of mitigation measures would be, that would be something that our traffic staff would look at when we, when and if we get a development application, if it's annexed. So at this point, that's just sort of the general guideline. And lastly, there was a species and habitat report prepared for the project, although no development is proposed, it was to sort of give us a baseline. So the report says that this site, as you've seen from the pictures, is kind of not pretty, and so there's no habitat right now for federal or state-protected species or plants. The report says that the creek adjacent to this parcel doesn't have a riparian habitat suitable for species, and that there's eagles nearby, but this property doesn't have any good nesting sites or batteries. And lastly, just as a reminder, the city codes require a 150-foot riparian setback from the edge of the creek, and so when and if they submit a development application, we'll be looking out for that. And that edge of creek would be taken from the new edge of creek after the city's land dedication for the creek widening. Okay, try this way. It's thinking? Sorry. Stone black. Oh, thinking circle. Trying to exit out. Oh, 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 okay. Let's get back to you. All right. All right, let me do that one. Okay, so in terms of community input, we had a neighborhood meeting in August of 2018. The information's in your packet. Some of the concerns that were brought up at the meeting were the lack of detail in the concept plan, making sure that this project, if it gets developed, is coordinated with the Resilient St. Brain, or how that timing's going to work out. There was a concern from the Native Roots Marijuana Shop across the road, across and up north, that's not in the city. They were concerned about being forced into an enclave annexation. If this came in, as you know, we took some, we took this up to council last year. Council's not interested in taking properties that don't request to be in, so that's not really much of an issue right now. There was a concern about the habitat and wildlife adjacent to the creek corridor, and there was some concern about stormwater runoff from development. If a development application were to come in, we have a very tight crew of stormwater engineers who really enforce our regulations, so that would have to be enforced within any development. And there were questions about potential residential density. And then I, you know, we got the application in, I sent out notices, posted signs, I didn't get any comments. Then when I sent out the letters for the public hearing, I posted signs, and I did receive three letters, which were forwarded to you. Again, concern about the lack of detail in the concept plan, concerns again about the impacts to the wildlife. There's a belief that this site was a landfill because of the Army Corps of Engineers report that there was like one page that was forwarded to you from a comment letter. And on your dais, I got confirmation, Josh Sherman is here, he's the project manager for the Resilient St. Brain. He reached out to the Army Corps and asked them for more detail about the statement that was made on that report about it potentially being a landfill, and they've cleared that up and said, actually, we heard it third-hand from a third party, it's never been corroborated, so we're going to retract that whole statement about it being a landfill from our final report. Because the sheet that you got from the report was a draft, it wasn't the final. The other concerns raised, someone requested that we require as a condition of the annexation that they must provide the 150-foot setback with no possibility for a variance request. There was a request for a conservation easement to protect the bank swallows, that was in your letters. And finally, there was a request to require remediation of contaminated soil. And so that's the input we got. We reviewed it against the review criteria, we put in the staff report our findings on how we thought it met the review criteria. So staff's recommending PZR 2020-2A. As far as next steps, as you know, you're recommending body, not an approving body, so after you make your recommendation, this would go up to City Council. I have to take it three times. I have to do a first resolution of statutory compliance, and that's verifying that it meets state statutes to be annexed. The second time, and that's tentatively March 31st. And all of these, I put the asterisk, the city manager has to give final approval on what goes on each agenda. So these could be bumped, but these are tentative. First reading of the ordinance, tentatively would go April 28th, because state law says you have to wait 30 days and 60 days from a second resolution. So the second resolution, and then the public hearing on the ordinance is tentatively May 12th. And so the applicant will come up next and do their presentation, and we're all happy to answer any questions. I also have Carolyn Michael, she's our traffic engineer, and so if you have any questions about the traffic study. We have Chris Huffer, our public works administrator, and then we have Captain Goldman, our fire marshal, and Amy Henyon, our hazmat reviewer from the fire department. So really, if you have any questions about the Phase One and Phase Two, they're here to answer your questions. So with that, unless there's anything specific for staff, I could turn it over to David.
Let's go straight into the applicant's presentation.
Okay.
Thank you, Ava.
Standby. You wore the E-drive, I think. All right. Riverset, this one?
Sure.
It's PowerPoint. I don't know what the other one is. The other one's a PDF. Okay, hold on. I'm just going to queue you up, and then I'll be out of your way. All right.
Should I sit or stand?
All right. Do you just want me to just hit the buttons for you?
Uh, that's fine.
Okay.
Good afternoon, evening, everyone. My name's David Starnes. I'm with Riverset LLC, the applicant, so I'm pleased to be here and present our application for conservation for you guys in terms of the annexation request for our six-and-a-half acre site at Boston and Sunset. So I'm not going to reiterate a lot, but Ava said a lot of information here, but just to kind of locate you, you know, we've owned this property since 2014. This property is one of two pieces that we own. This is a six-and-a-half acre site of Boston and Sunset, and we also own 21 South Sunset, just north in Catty Corner along the creek as well. And we're currently preparing our annexation application for that one as well, and so that will be forthcoming. So just to kind of, again, reorient you, it's nearly six acres, and this excludes the right-of-way, the Boston Avenue right-of-way, which is part of the annexation application as well, because that, Boston Avenue is in the county, and so it's based on, you know, consideration with Public Works, we incorporated this right-of-way into our application. The site's currently undeveloped. Lawson uses it, runs space from us in terms of outdoor storage, and for their trailers and masonry supplies and construction equipment. So our goal is to vastly improve what is there now. The existing zoning, as Ava mentioned, is GI in Boulder County, and the proposed zoning is mixed-use employment, which is the same as land use designation consistent with Envision So our proposed concept plan, as Ava mentioned, we're looking for mixed use. Primarily, this site is, we're considering flexible, commercial, and flex space. We're also evaluating the potential for live-work units, you know, it's going to depend on market viability. I know with the St. Brain Corridor focus area, you know, they are supportive of mixed uses, so this is something that we would look at, that we're seriously considering. We're doing a similar product down in Lewisville right now as part of our D-Lo Phase Two development. We think live-work is attractive, it provides opportunities for someone to live and work in the same place, and reduces traffic impacts. But the primary driver for this will be commercial. There's a gap really in the city of Longmont in terms of high-quality commercial space. You know, Longmont EDP, which is the primary business group for the city, has mentioned over and over again the lack of quality supply of commercial space for users, and having to turn away businesses that can't find, you know, quality space here in Longmont. And so our goal is to kind of meet that demand with the right type of space that's attractive today to attract tenants and users to Longmont that, based on our discussions with Longmont EDP, are moving elsewhere. And then also, in terms of the existing conditions, we, you know, we expect as part of the redevelopment to vastly improve what's there now. You know, obviously, with respect to the St. Brain Corridor, we work cooperatively with the city of Longmont and your partners in terms of improving this property, but also the public infrastructure that's associated with improving this property as well as Longmont Creek as well. So the main thing I would kind of emphasize too, again, you know, Envision Longmont is a driving vision for how Longmont should build out, you know, over the next 25 to 30 years. And our property is located within the St. Brain Creek focus area, which is one of four areas identified in the city to accommodate, that have the greatest opportunity to accommodate this future growth and demand. And so as far as I can tell, we're one of the first properties here that's being proposed to be developed to, within the St. Brain Creek focus area, to really improve this industrial, in our mind, our property being very blighted. And so, you know, two major goals that they talk about, you know, in terms of, within Envision Longmont for the St. Brain Creek focus area. One is, you know, revitalization of uses along the St. Brain Greenway is encouraged as improvements to the floodway are implemented and future risks are mitigated, and our project will be doing that. Secondly, the integration of high-density residential uses and supportive support services are encouraged as well as part of the mixed-use employment designation to increase live-work opportunities, expand housing options within the city, and leverage planned transit investment. And again, our project is, will help to address that as well. I was going to touch on a couple of the key goals that were in the packet in terms of our consistency with Envision Longmont. One is Goal 1.1, which was embracing a compact and efficient pattern of growth. Again, our property is an infill development. We're completely surrounded by the city of Longmont, so we're an enclave, and so we're not asking for an expansion of services outside the city limits as part of the intersection coming into the city, so we, you know, obviously hope to utilize existing infrastructure that's already provided. Policy 1.1B, again, you know, our project will support the adaptive reuse and redevelopment of underutilized sites and encourage higher-density infill and redevelopment. You know, the property is vastly underutilized right now. We want to really transform something into a legacy-based project that will be very much attractive to the city. Another goal in terms of promoting a sustainable mix of land uses, again, we're considering the mixed-use component with the commercial and flex being the primary driver, but also considering the live-work option as well. And another goal is Goal 2.1, which is integrating land use and transportation planning. So Boston Avenue is along the State Highway 119 BRT corridor project that's being implemented or planned through Border County and the city of Longmont and other jurisdictions. Again, we view this as something that was called transit-supported development. Again, it's development that is infill, that will emphasize pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. You know, we plan to make infrastructure improvements along Boston Avenue as part of our site plan application with this to help address those goals. And then lastly, and I kind of mentioned before, with Longmont EDP is addressing building space and infrastructure needs and other considerations of target industries in the workforce. So, you know, Longmont and the EDP group had mentioned, as I mentioned before, you know, really lack kind of high-quality space, and our goal is to reinvest and provide space to really address some of the goals of Longmont EDP, which is their advanced Longmont 2.0, which focuses on the target industries, including smart manufacturing, business catalysts, food and beverage industries, and then R&amp;D. And with the flexible nature of our space, it's not going to be like a Class A office space, it's something that we want to develop that's funky, that's adaptable, and it's flexible, and it's kind of current with the way the workforce environment is moving today in terms of kind of that creative space that could be coworking, that can be individual suites, but also can, also be kind of community-oriented space. And then I just want to touch on again, you know, projects like this in terms of annexation will really require a public private partnership with the city and your partners. So as I mentioned before, you know, the city, this, our parcel's been identified as an enclave parcel, so we're surrounded by the city, so, you know, we are an active, willing applicant that we want to be annexed in. And so that's something we hope can address, and also with our 21-acre site, 21 South Sunset, we're looking to have that annexed in as well. And so again, for that enclave annexation, we hope to address some of the issues that were raised by Brian in terms of City Council about wanting to be in the city. You also need some of our property as part of the Resilient St. Brain property, you know, project in terms of the corridor improvement. So, you know, we agree to make available portions of the property for RCP as well as potential right-of-way and any easements along Boston Avenue and Sunset Street as part of this project and Resilient St. Brain. Thirdly, as I mentioned, the annexation will, will be annexed in the Boston Avenue right-of-way between Sunset and the bridge as part of this application. Furthermore, we'll provide upgrades to Boston and Sunset Avenue that are required as part of the site plan application in terms of infrastructure improvements. And also, we will be working with the city for the relocation of the 12-inch water main that crosses our property and a 36-inch sewer main that will be, need to be relocated along Boston Avenue in the bridge. So we're willing to work with the city to help accommodate that, which further opens up development, you know, opportunities within our site as well. And my last slide on party thoughts, I guess I just want to reiterate that, you know, we envision our redevelopment as a cause for reinvestment within the St. Brain Creek focus area. This is the blighted area, our property is blighted. We are looking to reinvest and redevelop in something that will be a high quality to the city of Longmont. It'll repurpose the blighted property and address a growing demand for niche commercial and potential live-work consistently in Envision Longmont, and it provides an opportunity to make critical public infrastructure progress along the corridor. And we look forward to working cooperatively with the city of Longmont and the partners to improve this area. So that's the extent of our formal, you know, presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Starnes. Does anybody on the commission have any questions that require clarification at this time from either Ava or Mr. Starnes? Okay, seeing none, we will go with the public hearing part of this meeting. I just wanted to explain why I was being a stickler to Ms. Bowman about whether her comments were related to this project or not. If she had made her comments during the previous Public Invited to be Heard, they would not be, and they were about this project, they would not be included in the public record for this project as it moves forward. So I wanted to make sure that if she was going to make comments about this project per se, that they'd be in the record. So we do have, signed up on our list, Ruby Bowman, so if you'd like to, we're kind of figuring this out. If you come a little closer here, next to Jane Madrid, she's going to, she's going to keep the time. And...
And I just want to say, Heather Houston from Birducology is here, she was our consultant who prepared the habitat plan, so if there's questions, say.
So please give us your name and your address. Five minutes for your comments, but we need to have everybody really speak up so that this central microphone catches you. Okay? Thank you.
Ruby Bowman, 1512 Left Hand Drive, Longmont. I see several problems with the Riverset annexation. It is a former land, landhill site. It has a potential for methane to migrate from the Colorado Materials property to the Riverset. The annexation concept plan is incomplete, and the habitat assessment report should be redone to address off-site impacts of the St. Brain River and the wildlife species that use the corridor. The commission should not recommend an approval of this annexation. Instead, your recommendation should be, it needs more work. It needs more work to clean up the site prior to annexation, especially considering the applicant may in the future request inclusion in an urban renewal district for its property. The consultant, C.T.L. Thompson, identified a potential problem of methane gas migrating to the Colorado Materials property from the Riverset site. According to Guidelines for Landfill, Gas at and Near Former Dumps, the principal hazards associated with landfill gas are explosion and fire. The Colorado Materials property is a former landfill that had high methane... The Colorado Materials property is a former landfill that had high methane levels, and that's why venting system was installed on the property. Migrating methane from the Colorado Materials property should be looked into prior to annexation. As for the annexation concept plan, it shows nothing of what the future uses will be. I want to know what will be built on the property, which is next to critical wildlife habitat of the St. Brain, prior to annexation. I hope you understood in reading my comments how important the St. Brain River is to our fish and wildlife. The applicant should provide a detailed concept plan with the development layout and include measures to mitigate potential adverse impacts on the environment as code requires. Apparently, my four pages of comments were a strong statement that sent a message that the applicant needs to do more work. City staff was so unnerved by the evidence I presented with the Riverside property that the form, that was, wait, was presented that the city, the Riverside property was a former landfill, that they had Josh Sherman, the city's resilient St. Brain project manager, contact the U.S. Corps of Engineers today to get the Corps to remove Item 1 in the table that I referred to in my comments. The Corps complied, but I stand by my comments, especially the statement about the Riverside property being a former landfill. The U.S., the United States Army Corps of Engineers official told me that they reviewed aerial photos, the Corps came, and the Corps came up, came up with a conclusion that the Riverside property was a former landfill. It's an act of desperation for the city to work to discredit a legitimate concern about the landfill site. I've learned through this process that as a Longmont citizen, I should hold my cards until the last minute in order to get a fair hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Next on our list is Jamie Simo.
Jamie Simo, 525 East 16th Avenue. According to Chapter 15.02.140 of the Longmont Land Development Code, the city may require remediation of any environmentally contaminated property in annexation request as a condition of annexation approval. While the city may approve an annexation without remediation, it is, if it determines it is in the best interest of the city, approval of an annexation shall not act as a waiver of any requirement for remediation of hazardous substances previously established. As established in the Environmental Site Assessment, ESA, provided with the annexation request, the Riverside property may have been a landfill at one time. Even if it was not used as a landfill, however, there are other factors, including potential pesticides spillage and other hazardous wastes, such as oil from car maintenance, that must be addressed. There are many unknowns in the ESA, and it is troubling that there is little concrete documentation of what exactly occurred on the Riverside property over the years. The city should require a thorough assessment of the site and cleanup of any and all contaminants before the property is annexed. It also concerns me that the concept plan provided with the annexation request is very general. While the potential mixed-use zoning of the property may conform to the Envision Longmont plan, how can the city determine whether the developer's vision for the property is otherwise in alignment with Envision Longmont without additional details? If Longmont wants to have smart growth, it needs to know what developers plan to put where rather than allowing for a mishmash of development. Finally, the Species and Habitat Conservation Plan that was developed for the annexation request is incomplete. In Chapter 15.05.030 of the Land Development Code, Species or Habitat Conservation Plans must include, among other things, an analysis of the potential adverse impacts of the proposed development on wildlife and wildlife habitat, or on important plant species on or off-site movement. The conservation plan does not analyze the adverse impacts of the development on off-site species or habitat. For example, the conservation plan states that the stone cat, a native fish that is on the state list of species of special concern, does not occur in St. Brain Creek, which is not true. In fact, according to Boyd Wright, a native aquatic species biologist with Colorado Parks and Wildlife, the area from the Beckwith Diversion at Golden Ponds all the way to Sandstone Ranch is precisely where the stone cat exists in the St. Brain. This is corroborated by Timothy Diamico in his 2018 thesis, Stone Cat Ecology in St. Brain Creek, Colorado. Before annexation, impacts to native fishes, including the stone cat, should be evaluated. In addition, the conservation plan does not mention anything about the bank swallow nesting site that exists adjacent to the Riverside property. Bank swallows are a Boulder County species of special concern, and there are only a handful of known nesting sites within Boulder County. Furthermore, they are a declining species nationwide. Current plans for the Resilient St. Brain project call for the placement of a split-channel flow option right where the bank swallows nest, destroying this valuable habitat. Therefore, in addition to the required conservation easement for channel widening and construction staging for this Resilient St. Brain project, I very strongly urge the city to require an additional conservation easement for placement of the split-flow channel on the Riverside property in order for construction to avoid the bank swallow nesting area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simo.
Hi, my name's Sherry Malloy, 2013 Range Field Lane. I'm a member of Stand With Our St. Brain Creek. We are a growing group of community members who continue to advocate for protecting our St. Brain corridor from potentially damaging development by promoting policy and safeguards to foster riparian health and the wildlife that depends on it. Ninety percent of all wildlife relies on riparian areas for survival. We are not anti-development. We just want it to not cause harm by being set back and being appropriate. The Longmont reach of the St. Brain has tremendous ecological value with important natural resources. Portions of the corridor are designated as critical wildlife habitat and been identified as have an immense conservation value to the state of Colorado due to the presence of rare, threatened native fish species. The entire corridor is a stream habitat connector, which is how wildlife moves from one area to another. Evidence demonstrating how wildlife moves in this corridor include mink and beaver at Golden Ponds and Sandstone, coyotes and foxes throughout the corridor, and bobcats and deer at Sandstone. The economic benefits of protecting riparian areas are well documented. Longmont's 150-foot riparian conservation setbacks are not only essential to protecting the creek's health and the wildlife it supports, but also for protecting people, property, and infrastructure. Riparian setbacks sustain or increase property values by helping to keep community costs low, reducing infrastructure costs, and decreasing reliance on engineered solutions. The overall costs associated with the protection of riparian areas are considerably less expensive than restoration projects needed to repair damage from flooding. The Riverside application's concept plan is very general and does not specify what development is intended to take place in terms of building, intended uses, et cetera. This proposal appears to fall short of what's required in the LDC Code Section 15.02.060, which indicates a concept plan shall include mitigation of potential adverse impacts on the environment. I say this because while the applicant hired Birch Ecology to complete an environmental assessment, thoroughness of the environmental impacts are not sufficient without knowing what the proposed development might entail. Before this annexation is considered, it should be stipulated that the 150-foot riparian conservation buffer be protected by designating this portion of the property to the city of Longmont. This property is still in the floodplain and was not developable prior to the massive public investment in flood mitigation. FEMA is not expected to change their floodplain maps for another three years. The mitigation price tag is approximately $350 million and counting. Because of our investment, the public should get something in return for the big price tag our tax dollars are covering. The Army Corps of Engineers have identified 12 flood events in this corridor in the last 120 years. Even with the best possible mitigation efforts, common sense dictates this corridor will flood again. The lesson from the 2013 flood is give waterways space. It is morally and fiscally irresponsible to put people and property in harm's way. Although Lea Holt said in the early 1900s, "Whatever is in the floodplain belongs to the river, and it's up to the river when she takes it back." This annexation application needs to be amended before being considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malloy. Heather Houston.
I am Heather Houston, 4401 Bella Vista Drive. I'm the ecologist from Birch Ecology who prepared the report. And I didn't have prepared remarks. I just wanted to sign in because I'm a resident, and this is exactly the kind of project I want to see as a resident and as an ecologist. I think it's a good place to do something. I'm not into the phase-one side of environmental work. I'm an ecologist that focuses on plants and restoration ecology. But I think that, for me, going out to a place like this, it is not a hard decision to think that this is the type of place where, given the degraded conditions and what's proposed, I'm really excited as a resident. In terms of addressing some of the specific comments on the report, it said there's no habitat for stone cat because there's no water on the property. And I think there are a lot of opportunities with this property. There's, this is not the final chance to have a say on what goes on on the property. You all know that well. It's not common to have a full development plan at this stage, so obviously I couldn't evaluate that. What I can say is, the property right now is non-habitat. And so, I don't think it matters a lot what you do on it because that property's not habitat. The creek itself is habitat. The section that abuts this property doesn't have good habitat conditions. It will after the project. But I think there's a lot of opportunities to take that buffer area, and right now, it doesn't have native trees and vegetation in it. And so, this property can be developed and it can be landscaped with native species, cottonwoods and willows that go there. There can be things done with stormwater management that could make things better than they are today. Right now, we've got a lot of bare ground, and that's not good next to a riparian area either. And the bank is covered by crested wheat grass and a monoculture that's a non-native grass, and it doesn't have very high cover there either. I know the bank's going to get reworked, but I think, you know, it's true that the St. Brain corridor is an important habitat, and at the eastern and western edges of town, it's more important. It's important to maintain it here and respect it, but the quality of what exists in this industrial part and the central part of town is not the same as what we see at the edges of town. So, to me, this is a place where, like we've said, it's infill. You know, the crimes against nature on this property happened a long, long time ago. It's not now. You know, this is, how can we make use of a property in a great way that benefits people that are residents of Longmont like me? You know, I think, what can we have along this creek corridor? I'd like to live there. I'd like to have an office there. And environmentally, I think, in terms of the plants and animals, it's, it's not a concern.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Please come forward and give us your name and address and...
Yeah. Chris Boardman, 1512 Left Hand Drive. Just wanted to add a little more on the Army Corps of Engineers angle. What I get out of it is that they, they looked at it, they thought it was a landfill, and now at the last minute, we're hearing that they couldn't confirm that. And to me, that's not quite the same as confirming that it was not a landfill, and it's pristine, and it doesn't need remediation. We know it was across the street from Colorado Materials. I don't know if the street was there when there was a landfill or a dump or whatever at Colorado Materials. The whole place could have been a dump. I mean, it kind of reminds me of the stories about Belmont Butte in the Boulder Weekly a few years ago, where they had, turns out they had low-level radiation dumped on top of the Butte in the 60s, and that's still within living memory, but nobody knows where it is now. So, I think there needs to be more work on this and possible, probably environmental remediation and to determine suitable uses for this property before it should be annexed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boardman. Anybody else who'd like to speak? Please come forward if you want to speak about this. This is our only time to have a hearing from the public on this. Okay, seeing nobody, we will close the public hearing, and we will go to discussion amongst the commission. I guess we're just going to have to do this by raising hands. Commissioner Height.
Eva, I was looking at the timing of different hearings. I think the first one occurred in July 2018, and the most recent one before this February 2020 hearing was in December 2018. That's 15-ish months ago. Is there a timing limitation on hearings from when this project first had its, I guess, when it was initiated or at least brought to the public, and now to the time when it's being considered by us? It seems like a long time.
Chair Shernick, and Chair, so, we don't have anything in the code that says you have to have your neighborhood meeting and you have to file your application by X date. Our rule of thumb is typically within six months. And then, if it's been longer, we usually ask them to redo it. In this case, if you look at the packet, the neighborhood meeting was August 9, 2018, and on the following page, it says that the application was submitted in December of 2018. So that was four months.
The application for annexation?
For annexation for application. In the time period, I guess you would say the whole 12 months of 2019 was a series of back and forth between the applicant and staff. And that, as you know, in development review, they submit their annexation materials, we send back review comments on the plans, and then it's dependent on the applicant on their timeframe when they want to resubmit. And then, we usually turn things back within 30 days. I think there was, there was some lag time on the applicant's end of getting things back to us, and then us commenting again on stuff, and then them getting stuff back to us. So it did take 12 months through the process, but the application was filed in a timely manner from the neighborhood meeting.
The 1502.040F says that the city, and I think it's the Design View Committee, has the authority, if the applicant doesn't respond within 120-day period...
Correct.
To terminate the application.
That's right. And so, we did do that, and so then David resubmitted shortly thereafter. This is very often the case in development review. We have dozens of projects in our system, and so, we try and keep up with how long people are taking to resubmit. If they're taking too long, we will send them a timeout letter and we'll say, you've been 120 days since we gave you comments. You need to, we usually give them 14 days to resubmit. David, I think, needed a little extra time because they were revising the riparian corridor report. So, when someone's making a good faith effort and they say, no, I'm on, and I just need, my consultant needs a little more time, we'll work with you. We'll be flexible, and so, it did take 12 months to get through the process.
Next question I have for Eva, I'm sorry. The concept plan, there are comments from the public as well as, well, I have my own comments. The concept plan has two definitional provisions that I see. 1502.060 requires that for any major development plan, you have to have a concept plan. But we also have a definitional section at the end of the land use code that defines what a concept plan is. And it seems to be a bit more detailed than the thing we're looking at here, in particular with respect to identifying land use, development densities in relationship with other properties, utility systems and transportation systems. I guess we've heard that there are utility system capabilities that the city can meet for this particular property. And we've seen Boston Avenue, possible BRT route, and some bike lane issues, but does staff have any concern regarding the open, not a lot of concern, but is, would you like to see more?
Chair Shernick, Commissioner Height, of course, staff always likes to see more. It's not required, and I will tell you that this is very consistent with a lot of annexations that come in, where they'd like to bring the property in, and they don't have, they don't have a tenant or a buyer or a specific project, but they know they want to bring it in, get it zoned, consistent with our comprehensive plan, and then start fine-tuning development plans. And again, if it's annexed and it comes in for a development application, we start this whole review process over. We would ask for a fresh habitat report and geo-tech report and everything that's required with development review, and we'd start the whole process again. This time, we'd have something to base it against and give it more detailed review. So this is pretty typical.
Like I set you up as a straw man because that's my last question. The environmental reports, and I'll admit to everybody, in the earlier part of my life for 20 years, that's what I did, was review environmental reports to advise banks and lenders and purchasers of property, what was happening on the environmental side of the issue. This is 2014 report. It's six years old now, and... And stuff telling into the concept plan, in 1502-060, there has to be a commitment in the concept plan to address any potential adverse environmental impacts. From my review of the Phase 1, Phase 2 work that was done here, you know, the east side of the site was never investigated. It was never sampled. The sampling that was done was on the west side of the site. The east side of the site, you know, most of all the time was a pond. There's clearly evidence that there was fill material added to that part of the site. The work that was done, in my humble opinion, I couldn't recommend somebody buying it. But in terms of the annexation of this property from the city's perspective, I think the concept plan needs to address, A, possibly doing more investigation, but B, explicitly, to the extent that there's anything out there that hasn't been identified. And from what I can see, there hasn't been a lot of identification of all the, the environmental, potential environmental issues out there. The applicant has to be compelled to address those issues further. And I don't see that.
So Chair Shernick, Commissioner Height, I can defer to the fire department with Captain Goldman and Amy Henyon from our hazardous materials inspector. They, I am not an expert on hazmat, don't claim to be. So we refer those reports out to the fire department. They reviewed both. They found them to be satisfactory. We did ask them in writing, do you require any other mitigation measures? They said, no, at this time, we were comfortable with those reports. So are they in the hall? Oh, my goodness! He was right there.
Guess that was my cue, right? Captain Michelle Goldman, Fire Marshal. So when we review environmental reports, Phase 1s, Phase 2, both were done. Phase 2 by the Army Corps was done in '17. What we look at for is sufficiency. They did do TAPS ground. There are vents there. They did identify staining. They, this whole site was an infill project. So not just the pond you're referencing, the entire site and probably the other one he's annexing, that's all infill projects. When we look, maybe you can jump in if I'm, if I'm missing something. But the Phase 1 stated that, based on the low levels of contaminants identified in groundwater under the adjoining landfill, the site is unlikely to be significantly impacted by migration of volatile organic compounds, VOCs, or metals from the former landfill or gravel pits on either side. So we looked at the series of photos like, that were referenced. We also noticed they did put in vents, a vent system. And Public Works identified that, I'm looking for my sheet now. Oh, it's right here. Oh, see how soon I can do it. All right. Public Works did identify that they are EPA compliant. They had air monitoring and air permits for those sites. So we didn't think that anything else needed to be done there. They did soil sampling. There were some stained areas that they identified that would have to be mitigated. So that would fall to the applicant as well. So we thought the assessments were thorough. And we were fairly comfortable that the hazardous materials were not at levels that were over any limits at the EPA or needed to be reported further on.
Our historical documents did not indicate that.
This is Amy Henyon from Belmont Fire.
We didn't have any documentation that that was a landfill on that side of Boston. The only thing we found was the state of Colorado. A landfill was south of Boston and east of Sunset. It is not part of this annexation, according to the state records. Now, this was clear back in 1960 that this landfill was closed. So if the parcels or the land wasn't accurately documented, I'm not sure. So all of the reports with the state indicate that the landfill was south of Boston, east of Sunset, not this property, which is north of Boston.
So based on what we saw in the environmental assessments, we didn't see reason to require more testing other than the staining part, that would of course have to be mitigated, which is noted in the environment. So the things that were noted will have to be done by the applicant. So we didn't see that anything past that with the samples that they had taken required any more action from us. So we deal more, of course, with response. And so when we look at an event, we look at an environmental site assessment, we're looking at reportable levels. We're looking at things that could, if we leave a scene of a hazmat incident, we make sure that it is mitigated and we are bound to report certain things to the EPA. So that's kind of what we look at when we read a site assessment. Have they mitigated it to levels that do not require further reporting or mitigation? And I thought they had clearly stated that.
I'll add more to that. My understanding of the sampling, there was only one tremendously hot sample out of the batch, and it was for petroleum, diesel petroleum distillers. Again, on the west side of the site. The east side of the site, did you see any evidence of sampling in your review?
There's sampling map, but I didn't bring it with me.
It's in one of the, is it in the Army Corps?
It's in the ESA.
It's in the ESA?
It's in the Phase 2 report, right.
And they showed where they took their samples from?
It was all on the west side of the site.
I think they were directed to just take samples of where the ground staining was and also the groundwater. And when all those came back negative, they didn't go back, go further with more testing.
And maybe the applicant could clarify for me, too. My understanding was the east side of the site is a concrete fence guy or a concrete, I don't know if he's a flat worker. Do you know what's going on? It seemed like half the site was one use. Do you understand that?
I mean, previously?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, they, you know, as part of the Phase 1, you know, there was what, 12, 14? I mean, don't have any.
Which, 19 on the, on the west side?
Yeah. I had to redo that one again.
Because on the east side of the plant?
Talking about the concrete plant?
I'm not sure it was a concrete plant, but he was a concrete worker.
It's on the other side of the creek?
Nope, it's on this site.
Okay. The only concrete plant I see is on the other side of the creek.
And he had large underground storage tanks of some kind of caustic acid that used to cure his concrete.
Something says concrete plant on a map and it's east of the creek.
I'm not talking about concrete plant.
Okay.
I'll shift gears to talk about the methane. Because as I understood the report, the Colorado Materials Site to the South, that was a landfill. And they, the Phase 1 investigation talked to the people who had looked at that site and collected or constructed a methane recovery system.
Venting, you mean?
It was a methane recovery system because it was high for methane. On the south, on the site immediately to the south with groundwater and migration to the north, to this site. The Phase 2 report specifically did not look at methane on this site. Does that cause any concern for you? I'm not sure.
They did not look into that further. And I forget why he said.
So as far as, the venting system that's there is pretty far south. I know there's vents there. As far as methane goes, they, what they talked about, unclear whether the landfill venting system has eliminated the presence of methane. That's came from the Phase 1. Is that right? That's what we were talking about? In the subsurface, it may be migrating toward the site. Based on the potential for methane to migrate onto the site, dejoining former landfill is considered reportable or reportable. Is that what you're saying? That was in the Phase 1.
Right.
And then the Phase 2 did not say they did further testing on that, right?
They specifically did not look at it.
Correct.
Does that cause you any concern?
No, because I looked, when I looked at the EPA reports, there was nothing that was out of their levels. So they have to, they would have to report that. And the vents would have to be reported there also. So I thought with the EPA results, I was comfortable with what they had done.
Good. To conclude my dominating rap, Jack, for the applicant, would you be willing to, though it's not in the recommendations right now, to the extent there are concerns of discovery on site, you'll take care of it?
Yes. And the EPA site I'm talking about is compliance data. They are required to report those things. So they're, they were in compliance. And the EPA report showed nothing that was above or abnormal levels. So I was comfortable at that point.
In reviewing the methane-
Correct.
...treatment on the south side?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner, please.
Ava, I had some questions on the zoning. So although I'm looking at the river set annexation and vicinity map, and of course, it's in concept because I don't have any dimensions on this. But just for the sake of discussion, on that eastern edge, if one were to look at the 150-foot riparian setback, that would be measured from the property line, correct?
After dedication, right. Yes, because if it comes in and they want to develop, they'll have to plat the property. And at that time, we'll require the land dedication.
So then after you've planted the property, then there are setbacks that apply to the zoning, correct?
Correct.
And if you can think of possibly the most liberal zoning use that could happen to that property after, if it should then be annexed, what would be the setback from that 150 feet after it's applied? Could be five feet, 10 feet? Would there be buffering required?
It depends on the use. In a lot of industrial-ish zones, there is no setback. Building setback, building setback except a landscape buffer. If you have a parking area, it's like a 10-foot landscape buffer. In the 150-foot setback, that all has to be landscaped, though.
And what kind of landscape would that have to be? In that 150-foot buffer back from the edge of the-
Whatever is in our, in our development code for landscaping standards.
Okay, so this is as measured from the river. Just refresh my memory. Where is that measurement started there along the river?
Hold on, I'm grabbing my code here because I want to be precise where that setback comes from. It used to be top of bank. I just want to make sure that's still there in the code.
Yeah, Ava, it still is. It's either, it's either from riparian, edge of riparian vegetation or if there's not riparian vegetation there.
The top of the bank, which is further away. I guess it's the greater of the two distances. Plus 150 feet to where any development could occur from the site. Okay? And as you're, as somebody's getting ready to develop it, if in fact, council approves the annexation, what would be the next step? After everything's approved, if it does get approved?
If it was annexed?
What would be the next step for the applicant?
Then it's up to the applicant to decide how they want to develop it, come up with a site plan.
And that would go through the DRC?
Well, a plan and a site plan. And that, yeah, that would go through the DRC. And if for any reason, they couldn't meet the 150 feet, city council has changed the regulation. So you would be a recommending body on variance, not a final decision maker. And council would make the final decision on whether to grant the setback variance if, if one is requested. And it would have to go through our SES sustainability-
Evaluation System?
Evaluation System, where we have this checklist. And it has to prove up the merits of the case of why.
That would be an appropriate thing to do.
Right.
And they'd have to plead their case before us for recommendation. And council has the final decision on that. And that has to all be done before they can basically run the site plan through to approval.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ava, you mentioned something about this before, but I just want to get it clear in my head. So we have these environmental statements from 2014, 2015. Plenty of time has passed. So my concern is that these, these reports are relatively old. But I think you said something previously that if the applicant goes forward with a, with a site plan application and they go in front of DRC, that another environmental statement or another environmental study has to be done?
For sure, a species and habitat report and a geotech report. Maybe not another Phase 1 and Phase 2. On the timing of that, you know, as David mentioned, they acquired the property in 2014. That's, that's when the, that was done. Remember that before they even started this whole process and did the neighborhood meeting in 2018, they had to go to council for a referral. I think we did that in 2017, 2016. It's been a long time. I did that, but I don't remember how many years ago it was. So just keep in mind that that report was fresher when they started through this whole process. And as a, as a team of our city staff, when they submitted their formal application, we took into context that nothing's changed on the property since 2014. We've been observing it over the years. And there's been, you know, nothing significant that would warrant us to say, you need to go back and do more soil samples because we saw X activity going on in the last couple of years since that report was done. Nothing has happened differently on that. So, and so we started this, down this process, I think, 2016 with the annexation referral to council. So at that time, that report was fresh and it just kind of stayed with the application materials.
Okay, so you just said something. So the use of the site now, in my understanding, is that it's being rented to Lawson Construction or a portion of it is. And that they're storing some equipment. Have there been observations made by staff to see whether that has actually changed the conditions? What if they have like a truck there that's just like oozing oil? Do we not, because there's been a change in who it's being rented to, are we sure that there has not been a substantive change in terms of what's happening on that land?
Chair Shernick, I can see, no one has been going out and inspecting through the years the site and the soil to see if anything has been spilled out there. We do know it's been storage of one form or another for contractors, vehicle maintenance and so, landscapers and so forth. So it's consistently been that type of land use.
Chair Shernick?
Ava, you mentioned the industrial-ish use or of the area. If the, in, in the request for annexation, could the applicant have requested any other zoning other than what we've designated in the envisioned plan? And is it typical in that we designate property that is outside of the city within the comp plan?
Good questions. So Chair Shernick, Commissioner Teddick, to answer the first question, so we have our, well, I guess it's kind of going to be both. We have our comprehensive plan. We do designate land that's not in our city. But it's in our municipal service area. And we do that because we just want to let other property owners know, if you want to annex, this is what our expectation is. If you come to our city, this is what our expectation is of how you develop this land. And, and that's set by city council, of course. It's part of the policy. And so typically, it's our expectation that someone who wants to annex will choose a zoning that's consistent with their land use designation. And to answer the second question, if someone wanted to come in, bring a property in and zone it to something that's not consistent with its land use designation, they would also have to go through a comprehensive plan amendment first with city council and explain up why they think that there should be a different land use designation on that property and go through that whole process.
Thank you. Commissioner, all right.
Hi. Well, I'm going to step back and now look at the big picture a little bit. I personally support this proposal. And in general, I support urban growth within the corridor. If you look at the pedestrian shed that is walking distance north, walking distance south of the whole St. Brain Corridor, you're going to see that there are a lot of amenities and services already provided. So in terms of the land use point, this is a very convenient place. this is a very convenient place for urban growth. Now, there were a lot of environmental concerns in the correspondence we received. There are a lot of good examples in the whole nation as well. An extreme example is actually Central Park in Manhattan. A very high-density urban edge facing a very diverse and well-managed park, which is one of the best in the whole nation, in the world, maybe. So there are ways to provide that edge. There are ways to provide density to keep the environmental and riparian corridor. There were a lot of references in the correspondence to resilience and what's going to be the future, you know, climate change, et cetera, so forth. With that, I ask the question. If we don't encourage and allow growth within the riparian corridor or within the Sambreen corridor, what are we encouraging? We're encouraging sprawl. We're encouraging growth in cornfields. Any unit that doesn't come to this particular area will go somewhere else. And that's going to have much more serious consequences in terms of the habitat conservation and our energy conservation. Now, in terms of the resilience, one of the very important principles is the adaptation and creating pockets of self-sufficiencies. Building in cornfields is antithesis of that. That is why using this potential within the corridor is actually very resilient for the future. So it would be very short-sighted for us to look at certain concerns and kind of categorically reject growth within the corridor. That's my personal opinion.
Commissioner Goldberg?
Eva, there was a concern brought up about the stone catfish. Stone cat fish. So anyways, it appears to me if I look at the diagram that the property does not go into the creek currently. That the applicant's property isn't part of the creek. So technically, I guess I can see. I guess then does, if I have a question, would that then go to Josh Sherman about their, what gets done when the channel gets widened with this, with this fish?
With the fish, yes. To answer your first question, yeah, the study would not, this property wouldn't involve, because they don't have, like she said, there's no water.
But it's, it's close to it. So I'm just wondering, when the channel gets widened, what do, what does the city do in regards to this stone cat fish?
Good evening. Josh Sherman, City Longmont Public Works Natural Resources. Civil engineer and project manager on this, one of the project managers on the city is Resilient St. Brain Project. With regard to the channel cross-section, if you will, for, for the improvements and widening, we create, I don't have any exhibit, but we create a tiered, multiple-tiered cross-section. And it has a pilot or a low-flow channel within that that meanders through the low flow. We've sized that low-flow channel for historic base flows and tried to provide a depth that allows for the native aquatic habitat. So that, for instance, maybe the water doesn't get too hot during the summer whenever we're in some of those low-flow periods. And so that, in other areas, not specifically this reach, but if we need to, and we have drop structures, then we'll create fish passage through those areas so that they can migrate upstream and downstream. So those, the, the project has early on and continues to work with our own natural resources department, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, others with regard to, you know, not just aquatic species, but, but all habitat through the corridor.
Then I have, Eva, who can speak towards the bank swallows and the concern that was brought up about the bank swallows in that area?
We have Dan Wolford from Natural Resources who might be able to answer about bank swallows.
There was, there was concern brought up by the public that there's bank swallows in that area, that they're, I guess, a protected species?
Well, they're a migratory species. So from that perspective, they would, they are protected during their migration period of time. A lot of that would be coordination with our engineering staff and the contractors for a given project. Make certain that none of that disturbance, if they would move in during that time, that then their nests won't be disturbed. So if we have the ability to move in there prior to them moving in or migrating, then we don't have a problem. Once they're here, then it's hands-off until they migrate likely in October.
And then did this, there was a, a study done. And did the study show that there was currently these da-da-da-da, I'm trying to look, the bank swallows? Was that, was that shown in the study that they're in that area?
The report that I wrote?
Yes.
No, because that's not on the project site. I mean, there's no, my study is within the red boundary of the project site. So I didn't look at off-site impacts. We discussed the bald eagle because it's in the corridor and it's a bird that flies around and is not so tied. But we didn't look at impacts to bank swallows that aren't on the project site. There's no habitat for them on the actual River Set property.
Okay. I don't have any question.
Commissioner Flack?
Tell me about the area where the, the bank swallow is most, where its habitat mostly is.
Typically, what we see is a lot of the bridges that we have throughout the city and underpasses, a lot of our trails, we do get quite a few swallows that come in and nest in those sites. A lot of cut banks, if you would go out to the Sambreen at Will County Road 1 and look west, you see where there's a cut bank and you see quite a few bank swallows in through there. We see quite a few swallows that are, you know, in those cut banks along the Sambreen, again, to the east of Will County Road 1. But again, on a regular basis, I mean, even our park staff has to be very cautious in the early spring to make certain that all nests are removed, even in our shelters where they get tucked up in quarters and do those kinds of things. So, you know, we see them pretty regularly throughout the city.
But in terms of habitat, in the whole scheme of the larger areas, say of the United States, is Colorado a prime area or is it?
I would say yes, most definitely.
So there are probably more bank swallows in other counties as well?
You know, again, I'm not that expert on the individual species, but as they migrate up and down, you know, I would suspect it. On our Front Range and some of those movement corridors, you in fact have a number of swallows.
Thank you.
I have a question, and I think you might be the right person for it. Remember, I think it was Ms. Malloy had in her statements the question, how can an environmental assessment be made without knowing what will be built? Could you speak to that?
Certainly from that perspective, I mean, as we're looking at this being an annexation, we're not seeing any kind of real development going on. It's just political boundaries being shifted, really. From our perspective, as we looked at the habitat assessment, you know, there were issues in just identification of species. Wasn't a big concern. Now, as a development plant comes in and looking at what, you know, what's going on, and especially in that riparian corridor, what the intentions are, then we might have more significant concerns. But at this point in time, this is really more of an awareness, you know, for our perspective. We know generally what that property is being zoned as. So based on those, I think, you know, we've got at least enough information to believe that we have a sense of what's going to happen.
Commissioner Goldberg?
Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the rest of the commission for slowly striking off all of my questions that I had listed. So with that, then I guess I'd like to just revisit a couple of the key concerns that we heard in the feedback from the public today. Maybe we can get a step closer towards making a decision today. Eva, I just want to be abundantly clear, and I know you said it already, that there was multiple concerns about how can we approve something before we see a more developed plan? But just to be abundantly clear, where we're at today with this annexation proposal and concept plan review before us, this is typical. We are, we're in a normal place during annexation review. And yes, sometimes projects are more, are further along, sometimes they're less. But there's no red flags raised by the city here for the project that we're reviewing today.
I guess Commissioner Goldberg, I'd say all those are accurate.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, you know, Ms. Simo, Ms. Malloy, at least those two echoed those concerns. Additionally, Mr. Boardman, Ms. Simo, Ms. Bowman, Ms. Malloy, just, you know, here today, echoed concerns about this being a former landfill site. Maybe, maybe not. But the reporting that we were given today from the Army Corps of Engineer, you know, our kind of governing body, if you will, said, we don't have any evidence of this being a former landfill site. Is that correct?
Again, Commissioner Goldberg, that's correct. And more importantly, they didn't do a detailed study. That was an anecdotal remark that they had heard, that they had put in the report. We did get a Phase One, they did soil samples. There was no material there consistent with the landfill, with their boring.
Great. The rumor being that it was once a landfill, not that we did the reporting and that we got that all back today.
Right.
Cool. It is also, like, the burden falls on the developer. If there's any of these tainted soil treatment, tainted soils or stains, they do need to be addressed by the developer. So concerns with methane might be revisited. Concerns with soil will all need to be addressed in that burden on the developer.
Correct.
Thanks. Okay. There have been, I think, multiple species and habitat assessments done. And you identified, I think, and I'll turn to Chairman Sharnick's question as well, that there may be an opportunity for an additional habitat assessment as this project moves along. The feedback we've received so far suggests or confirms that there's no existing issues relating to habitat or wildlife. Let me stop there. That's a question to you, yeah. Is that, is that how the reports have read so far?
Yes, Commissioner Goldberg, so typically with annexations, a species and habitat report serve as kind of a baseline of what's there. And if we don't have a site-specific plan in the concept plan, then we're just saying the baseline, here's what's existing. When and if the development application were to come in, that's where they have to start really digging deeper into the impacts of adjacent species and making sure that those aren't being impacted.
Great. Yeah, this, I mean, obviously, this is a very critical issue for those of us, you know, who love this city so much and this town so much. Protecting those habitats is really important. Of course, also identified in our packet was there's no concern about impacting eagles, you know, some of these, you know, more provocative animals that, you know, animals that live in our, in our town. This isn't an issue, but certainly as the project moves along, we'll continue to track that.
Right, I would actually just say, just sorry, just to add to that is, this, this could actually be better environmentally because they don't have any trees or anything out there that would provide nesting, whereas if, you know, the development plan were to come in, they'd have to have landscaping plans with trees, especially adjacent to the creek, so that could provide habitat where there none, there none exists at the moment.
Okay. Now, also during this discussion, I heard the applicant confirm, although it's part of the process anyways, but confirm that if any additional concern, environmental issues arise between now and development, that he would own the addressing of those issues. Is it also true that we just highlighted some of, some of the values that this project could bring to the table as far as serving our goals in our envisioned Longmont and general comprehensive plan? You know, the goals of using infill, developing where, you know, developing, using infill, you know, growing. And then also providing creative, unique living spaces, workspaces, and really just addressing some of the goals that came out of the envisioned Longmont. Cool. So I think maybe I'll stop there and just kind of flip it back to the rest of the commission. At this time, given there's, we've addressed some of the concerns raised by the public. We've addressed anything, any issues raised by the, by the city in reviewing the packet and given the fact that the city's recommendation is to approve it. I'm leaning favorably towards approving it. So I guess looking to see any feedback from the rest of the commission.
Commissioner?
Commissioner Teta? I have a question to Commissioner Goldberg's point for Eva, but maybe for Josh. With regard to the dedication for widening of the creek, which sounds very attractive to me. If we were to deny, or the council were to deny the annexation, would, how would that proceed? Would that be, would that still be possible? Or is this our opportunity to get the creek widened in that spot?
So again, Josh Sherman, so the language that's currently in the annexation agreement is kind of very typical of what we put in annexation agreements when we know we might have an impact on a, on a property based on some master plan or other piece of information that we might have. And so it requests that they dedicate that land to the city at time of final plat or upon our request. But to answer your question, if they weren't coming in for annexation, we, we've already talked to them in terms, just like we've talked to all the other impacted property owners about the project to say, when we get a little further along with final design and we know what we're going to need to do with regard to actual boundaries, we're going to talk about acquisition of either land or permanent easements or temporary construction easements, whether they're annexed or not annexed. And so really, it's a timing issue. If, if this annexation goes through or doesn't go through, but if it goes through, it could still take some time. And if we get to a point where we need to acquire land before that annexation is complete and we can request it, we'll talk about acquisition. If it's the other way around, then we'll just ask for the request. And so we have to do acquisition or easements on previous phases. And to be honest, most of the properties adjacent to the channel experienced the 2013 flood. And to date, we've been in a, you know, very fortunate situation of it's been a willing seller, willing buyer situation because, you know, the goals of the Resilient St. Brain Project to protect this community from future flood risks, those that are at most risk are oftentimes those that are immediately adjacent to the creek.
Thank you.
Related with that, you said there's an easement option as well. So if you know that annexation is going to happen, but you need to act further, fast, you can create a temporary easement, right? And then the, you know, the land is going to be delivered after the approval anyway?
There's probably a way to work that out, but typically, and in this case, actually, we have some utilities that we need to relocate ahead of any channel improvements proceeding in this corridor. If we move forward with those ahead of this annexation, we would need some easements, typically permanent easements for our utilities. Because there's never a guarantee that they take the next step. But the situation depends, if the situation were one, that a temporary easement was suffice, we could potentially evaluate it.
Commissioner?
So to turn it with the data, I'm going to be in favor of this, with this proposal, this annexation with some caveats. My first concern was the length of time that it passed between the initial concept and this hearing. This is an annexation, we've had a robust public participation. So that concern doesn't really seem to be borne out in reality. People are paying attention to this thing. The concept plan is a little thin. I understand it, you know, except the concept plan is a little thin with one caveat. And that caveat gets to the fact that the environmental assessment was old. Our code requires for annexation 1502-140 that the applicant shall perform all necessary environmental side assessments. I don't personally deem that such an environmental assessment meets those requirements. 1502-060 requires that the concept plan explicitly state that the applicant will mitigate any adverse impacts on the environment from the project. So what I'm going to, what I'm thinking of proposing and finding a proposal is with respect to our, our thinking of proposing, or finally going to make a proposal, is with respect to our resolutions, the Part B resolution, that we approve subject to condition, the condition being that a new environmental assessment be done and that the applicant takes care of any environmental conditions that are done prior.
Is that a motion?
I'm going to open that up to discussion if everybody wants to talk about it, or, all right, Josh, I'll just do it. Laugh at me. I will move for approval of PZR 2020-B, Resolution Plan and Zone Commission Recommending Condition Approval of the River Set Annexation, finding that the application was submitted, it meets DRC review procedures, et cetera, but that with respect to meeting the conditions of approval 1502-055 and 02-06082, that it meets the Development Code with the following conditions. One, that an updated environmental assessment investigation be performed, and two, that the applicant agreed that it will follow through recommendations for testing and/or remediation identified in that ESA report.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to approve 20, PZR 2020-DB with the conditions that an updated ESA be done and that the applicant agrees to do testing and remediation if necessary. Commissioner.
I'm going to second that motion because any land that's in an infill position within the City of Longmont, I would just assume that the City of Longmont has the review authority over that parcel because it's of more interest to us as the City of Longmont than it ever would be for Boulder County. So I second your motion.
Commissioner Goldberg.
Yeah, I'm favorable to the motion, just on the condition that neither one of these conditions that have been added by Chairman Height are not already implied or presumed in, you know, as it reads or based on, you know, existing DRC, you know, and just existing processes. So maybe, Eva, can you confirm that, is it duplicative, is it redundant to add the requirement for a fresh environmental assessment, or to add that the applicant must be willing to address the, any environmental issues that arise? And you play with my words there for a second. Is that necessary, or is it?
Well, it's up to the, it's the Commission's prerogative if they, I mean, we have said here and publicly testified, we've seen a Phase 1 and a Phase 2, our fire department's comfortable with it. They don't recommend any further mitigation. We've said we don't see any significant changes on the site that would make us want to get a more updated environmental report, but that it is the Commission's prerogative to make recommendations to council. So, yeah.
Okay.
I'll add onto that, too, because respectfully, what I heard, and with all due respect, the fire department has looked at the reports that we've provided, and they didn't see anything that required additional investigation. I disagree. It's a secured investigation. Things have changed on the site. There's a new set of tenants, at least, or at least one new tenant. And most specifically, you know, the concept plan doesn't contain that required language to take care of any environmental impacts.
Sounds good, Eva.
Commissioner Teta. Speaking to that, I think, in fairness to the applicant, would, at the time of a concept plan, would these environmental assessments need to be done anyway? And would their doing it now satisfy those requirements if they were necessary? In other words, would that, could that take the place of some additional environmental assessment that might have to be done at the time of the presentation or the, of the concept plan? Right?
Or the site plan.
Of a site plan. Is that?
Commissioner, so you mean, yeah, so if they were to come in and commit for development review, we would not require a new Phase 1 and Phase 2 because they've been accepted by the fire department at time of the annexation. We would require a geotech report, and dependent on the findings of the geotech report, we may require some mitigation, but that would be dependent on what's submitted to us.
Thank you.
And again, I'll add, it's one shot to get the appropriate environmental assessment at the annexation now.
I'd be in favor of that.
Any further discussion? Okay, let's take a vote on the motion that's in front of us. Jane, we'll just do this by hand. Should we?
Oh, roll call it and let you, you put me up.
Do you want us to stand and be counted?
Yes, we could do it by roll call. I mean, it doesn't really matter. I mean, in effect, it's a roll call. Is it easier for you that way?
Doesn't matter.
Okay. So how about, does it matter if we do no's first or yes first?
Nope.
All right. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Any abstentions? So that passes unanimously. And this item will now be forwarded to the Longmont City Council for action. If you're unfamiliar with council procedures and intend to appear before council, please contact the Planning Division for further information at 303-651-8330. All right, Mr. Sterns, thank you very much for presenting your application. Eva, thank you for taking all of our questions. And thank you very much to the public. We appreciate all of your feedback. It helps us make better decisions. So thank you for being here on a snowy night. We do have some more items on our agenda, which we'll try to get through so that our gentleman next door can start jackhammering. Next is final call, public invited to be heard for anything that's not on tonight's agenda. Does anybody want to speak about anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Seeing no one, we'll close the public invited and encourage. Any items from the Commission? No items from the Commission? Any items from the council representative? Here it is.
I just wanted to say that a lot of the correspondence that the Commission received, the council also received, and has spoken about amongst ourselves to a certain extent, and that the council was definitely very interested to hear what the deliberations and recommendation was from the Commission. And I'll be glad to obviously add some commentary to what will obviously be provided to us in our packets. And as always, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. Any items from Brian Schumacher, Principal Planet? No. Seeing none, next item on our agenda is adjournment. Thank you very much.